Call this to pay account, commission story, we start with congratulations to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all have a copy of the next proceeding meetings, there are additions or corrections?
Mr. President, I move there are no additions or corrections, the amendment is being accepted as presented.
Been moved in second, the amendments be accepted as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. We'll have the department head reports, Mr. Havlin.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
We've been pretty busy trying to keep getting chips still caught up. We've done some in Zane's area, but we got a lot more to do in yours. We're gonna swing them back around to it. We're about done with yours Frank, I think we've got about $4,000 left of the oil money in yours yet. We're gonna wait till we get all the way done and see how much we got left and we'll make a bind and just find a real bad spot to do them. Because 4,000, it's not even about a third of the tanker, about where it is. So, and we've got, they're over in your area right now.
Goodbye.
Yeah, they're doing, out there at 450 East into Spurngerville and doing the intersection of Spurngerville and then they're gonna come down and do west of Spurngerville on Spurngerville Road. They got some spots down there, they're gonna spot it and then they're gonna hit a couple of them small roads down through there and get them solid.
Okay.
Cause they haven't been touched in a while, they really need it. But we'll, I've shown Richard, I got him all lined out and everything, he'd been up in Bentonville area checking roads up there, what to do up there when we get up in that area, we'll swing around and go there after Barton's area.
Okay.
And work back down.
Okay.
We tried the strip patching and it seemed to work pretty good. We done it out on Philly Road and 150, we did edges and when we had a spot in the center, we hit the center solid, just in spots.
Yeah.
And it saved a lot of oil and seemed to work pretty good.
True.
So, if I told him if he could find an area up there to do that, it'd be ideal. You can save money, you can get a little more area covered.
Good.
That's, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, since this is probably your last appearance before us, thank you for your years of service and for the time I've been here, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Well, I enjoyed doing it.
They have a super job.
Yeah, thanks, Jack.
Bill Gray?
Morning, John.
Morning.
Uh, I'm still waiting on Biz to come back, I've got the compressor down at the annex and their, one of the air conditioning compressors is gone. So, I'm still, I've got one bid in, but I'm still waiting on.
It's hard to get them in, you're saying?
Well, I can't get anybody to get back with me, but I'm still working on it, so hopefully I'll get somebody this week. Um, something else I was gonna, oh, I got a boiler to jail. Um, I can't get it to quit on me. It quits on the weekends, but I can't get it to quit on me during the week, so, I got, until it quits, I can't.
Find out what's wrong with it.
Uh, what I've been doing is I've been coming in on Monday, switching it over and running it all week, and it's been doing fine. But if I leave it on and it runs the weekend, Saturday morning, I'm in here. So, and I've tried that too for two weeks and it's done it both times. Until it quits when I'm here, I'll, I'll have no idea, so.
Okay.
I put new flame rods, I put new igniters, I put everything in it that I can put in it. But until it throws a code and we can find out what it is, I have no idea. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. IT Director, Mr. King.
Morning.
Good morning.
Last couple of weeks, we've had some network issues that I've been getting straightened out. It started with our internet just completely bombing out and I reset that. In the process of fixing that, it brought up another issue that was causing problems with people staying on the network and we seem to have gotten that stabilized. The first sheet that you got here is a scanner that was approved to be replaced previously. I wanted to get reapproval for that for the clerk's office upstairs before I just ordered it, given the price on it. It was approved under Ben, but I didn't want to just assume that the approval was still there before I went ahead and ordered it. The next item there is a Cisco switch, which is one of the pieces of equipment that I was having problems with. I want to order a spare, so that if we have problems, we have an item that we can swap out with, rather than just waiting to fix the problem, waiting on a piece of equipment. The third sheet is a desktop PC, these are what I've been ordering to replace the Windows XP machines as of this moment. I believe we only have four Windows XP machines left in the courthouse, I could be mistaken. At least two of those, we've got issues with legacy software that we cannot, we don't have the discs for it to reinstall on new machines, so we're trying to find ways to let people still use the Windows XP machine in a virtual machine or some other environment that does not prevent, present the security issues that Windows XP does now that it's no longer supported by Microsoft. As I said, I only know of four in the courthouse and that, and that four includes, I believe the animal shelter might make five. But with these computers, that should be enough to replace and possibly leave me with one spare computer to switch out if there are problems within the courthouse where somebody's machine goes down to where we can just replace the machine. The last item on, in the packet I gave you is the printer for the auditor, or, sorry, the assessor and the surveyor downstairs. This price was given to me by Mike Winta from the county council. According to him, the fund that Kathy Rhodes has available can be used to purchase a lease for three years, which would give us the best price. And then we would only be billed for a month, basically our usage, so.
You're talking about leasing?
Yeah. If, assuming that he's correct and that that fund is available to be used to purchase the lease for three years, pay for it all at once, then that would give us the best price for how much we're gonna be using it. We would basically just be billed per square foot on our actual usage. And that is.
Bill per square foot?
Basically, the print size varies. You can make a three foot by ten foot print, which would give you 30 square feet, or you can make a two foot by two foot. Kathy just brought these maps over. But this is basically what they'll be doing. So, and it's on a roll of paper, so it, you can make it as long or as short as you need and it cuts it.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why they bill it by the square foot.
Okay, and you print those, what are those for? What are those for when you print those?
Well, there's their maps for the reassessment.
These are for the reassessment.
Uh, we have to have maps, it just shows off G I S, they print it off the G I S and then now when they go out visiting, we have to visit every parcel in the county, that this, and let them know that the parcel's been touched and it gets them a routing.
Yeah, and it shows all the parcels on it, so.
Now, tell me again, what happened to printer that was down like this?
It was dead, it had not been used in at least three years, if not more. And while it sat there, it basically.
Cost more to fix it than it would.
Cost more, about $6,000 estimated just to fix it.
I think it was like $6,400 or $6,300.
Yeah, if not more, I mean, it could've easily gone up even more.
Now, let me ask you another dumb question, if it wasn't used for three or four years, then.
Well, one, from my understanding, the state has dictated this reassessment throughout all the properties in the county, which it probably was what they wanted to use it for. Another thing is the previous surveyor, my understanding, did not use it, but Warren would like to use it, for his process, he wants to use it. He has the equipment there, he'll use it. But the maps and surveying stuff, the regular printers just don't print big enough.
Right, I understand that, but I would assume that we would've been using it before, but.
I, that was before.
They printed off a little eight and a half by 11, our previous vendor, eight and a half, eight and a half by 11 off the, so, they want a bigger map to be able to do a more thorough job, the routing and making certain that everything in the area, in the neighborhood is keeping up.
Okay, the other, the other question that we have is more discussing it, we see a purchase price, but not a lease price, and the other question I have that is, does that also include a maintenance agreement?
Yes, that, the, it, I think if I called right, it's $74 per month.
$74 per month.
Which, if we pay for the three years all at once, it basically boils down to about $2,900.
That's right.
And that does include maintenance, they're supposed to get here supposedly within four hours. Mike Winta has worked with this company before, architectural firms, he says they're very, you know, well spoken for and he's had great experience with them, so, as far as that.
Have we got quotes from other people?
I have, the other quotes that I've gotten have been a little bit higher, but we don't have that reputation with them. From, you know, we've, nobody, nobody has worked with them directly here in the courthouse or myself, so, I'm just going off what their reputations are, but this eastern company, Mike has worked with them and he's had experience with them, plus they got the best price.
Are you sure the other quotes are higher than this?
Yes.
And also the ink and the.
Yeah, they just bill us for the ink and paper, which would come out of the office place, and that's, like I said, that's based upon our usage, so they just bill us for what we use.
I have to be the, excuse me, I have to be the devil's advocate, I guess, is this a need or a want?
What?
Is this a need or a want?
This is a need.
Okay.
We don't want to buy this.
Right.
But it's, it's something that we need to be able to, there'll be assessment on it and it'll be something that other departments can use also.
Those paper you handed me is what's in your fund?
Yes.
Purchase it?
Yes, that, that, that is.
Eight thousand four nine six fifty six, per lease. So, your, your budget would cover.
Yeah, so it's not coming out of the general fund or anything, the money's already there.
Where this money comes from is we charge the auditor's office, when someone comes to transfer property, we charge, we collect a $10 fee for a sales disclosure on all sales and that's the money that goes into this fund that Kathy has available.
Okay.
All right, but we don't use this very often, it's just beginning of each single year, well, each year, so, you know what, it gets clogged up if you don't use it.
Yeah.
It dries up, this will.
This one won't have the same problems with being not used that the other one did.
But the company.
Yeah, the company is providing the ink and paper, all we gotta do is call them and they take care of that stuff.
And Warren will be using it as well, right?
Warren will be using it.
And if there's any.
He'll be dealing his office.
The highway or.
Yeah.
What I need is for, they'd be, I'm not understanding, but.
Yeah, it will be a network, on the network, so, I mean, there's no reason why everybody in the courthouse, the prosecutor's office has needs, has a need for a big print for something they're doing, we can do, that will be able to do it.
And this, this other stuff that you got here, this, and you said you wanted a spare one in case.
The switch, yes.
Something came out. I mean, I, that'll come out of your.
No, that'll come out of my budget.
Right, and, I mean, it makes sense to be preventative maintenance, that way we have something on hand, we don't have to wait for.
Exactly.
Down time, or you have to run and get parts or whatever.
And the desk, Michael, the desktop here for 58499, how many of those do you want?
I've already ordered those, cause I was told that those were individual, the approval was needed and on an individual item basis.
Okay.
So, I just wanted the council to be aware, or the commissioners to be aware of what I was ordering and what kind of machines we were putting in place to replace the machines as they get older. I mean, these machines should last two to three years, based upon usage of what we're going through, so.
Okay.
And as we go through this, we'll, we'll start cycling machines out after about two or three years and replacing them with new ones, so that we don't have them failing left and right. The final item I have was asked for me by Melinda in the clerk's office this morning, they have a copier that needs replaced. She's already gotten one quote, I'm gonna get some, two more. And the copier they've got has been used for eight to 10 years and that's really exceptional for a copier, that it's made it that far. But once you have one last that long, the parts start getting more expensive, because they start becoming rarer, so.
And since you've, since you've come on board, do you see our technology problems, that expenditure's kinda dying off, you know, getting better over time, I mean?
Yes, I think once we get in kind of a pace, the Windows XP issue, when they stopped supporting that, that became a security issue, that all the computers had to be replaced or running Windows XP. So, hopefully, if what we can do is we'll start doing offices in cycles, we'll replace one office's computers per year or, and replace others as needed, but just go one office around and only have to replace them as needed beyond that. So, that should help the technology budget as far as that goes.
Okay. So, you wanna, this was already approved?
That was already approved, but I wanted to make sure that we still have.
This has not been approved?
The switch has not been approved, no.
That's already been ordered and that's already.
And the scanner?
The, the printer and the, the switch are the two things that we, we're looking for approval on.
Okay. Money's there to do all this, right? Yes, we do need a motion for those two others.
Mr. President, Mr. reaffirm the motion on the Fujitsu, I move for the price of 132999. I also move to purchase the Cisco Force Gigabyte managed switch at 94599 and out of the fund in the Ms. Rose's office for the Canon 765 series printer for the $74 a month, three years of that to be paid immediately. Motion to approve those.
Been moved in second to approve the two items, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Where'd you go?
Oh, thirty.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Michael, in the, in the future, if you would, when you get three quotes, if you would, just bring us all three quotes.
Okay.
Instead of one, okay?
And then, are you, the other thing for the clerk's office, real quick?
Yes, sir.
For the.
The copier.
We didn't really mention that, I mean, you did, but, you guys wanna get quotes and then bring them back to the next meeting, that way we can.
Yeah, we'll do that. She had just mentioned it to me right before the meeting.
Well, the next, the next item we consider.
Yeah, so that'll be the next meeting.
Is where we're gonna find the money to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, around the minute, if that's, we're not there.
And the one that she needs is a larger machine, she has to have it, the consort staple, the whole nine yards, so, I'll have to make sure to get, I'm probably gonna try to get four quotes, cause there's enough companies out there that should be able to give us the quotes and information that we need, as well as service contracts and the other issues, so.
Okay.
And I know you've got plenty to do, Michael, but it would be helpful to the commissioners if we, if you could, trying to make you a list and anticipate what these needs are gonna be, instead of.
I am, I am trying to.
Have to have two down a minute and don't know where we're gonna get the money, you know?
Yeah, I, I am trying to, as far as the copiers and that kinda stuff, it's, I'm just now settling in.
I understand, I understand.
As far as that goes, with that network problem we had the last two weeks, it took up a lot of time that I would've been using to.
Right, I understand.
Learn some of that stuff, so.
Thanks, Michael.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Veteran Service Officer Bobby Smith, is he here?
Yes.
Morning, Bobby.
Morning, Mr. Smith. Hello.
Thank you.
Okay, that's really for info, for the county commissioners and those that's interested. During the month of July, the Fayette County Veteran Service Office has assisted county veterans and their families. I had ten scheduled appointments, had five walk-ins and 55 phone calls. Meetings included, a meeting with the county commissioners, as well as Richmond and Dayton VA Medical Clinic and Center. There was a ceremony in Dayton, Ohio for Korean War veterans that received medals from the South Korean president recently, and that was well attended. Tuesday, July 29th, I attended, actually, we set up a booth at the Fayette County Free Fair, and I wanna thank Brian that was up there, I don't know his last name, but he was one of the directors, that he gave that to the county, there was no cost whatsoever to set that tent up, and I understand it's quite expensive for those areas to set up. So, we set up one night, the head nurse out of Richmond VA, Carla was there, and we together spoke to over 100 veterans, and 50 of them I'd already met and did things for and doing other things for, so, there was, there was a lot of veterans up there that night. And they're starting to call and make appointments for this month already, so we'll do some claims and some other items for those veterans. 2015 working budget has been submitted to the county council for review and hopefully approval. I took a week of vacation and during that week, I actually worked more that week than I did any other time, so, actually, I turned in hours, so, didn't turn into a vacation. I'm attempting to follow up those calls, there's a lot of calls that come in that I used to just answer them right on the spot, but I'd go ahead and let them get to the voicemail when I have a veteran sitting there, so I can get the claim accomplished, so I'm making that time out. I'm currently working on veteran claims, medical health applications, we have assisted veterans, about 400 of them in these last two years, assigned up for health care at Richmond VA Medical Clinic and Dayton, Ohio Medical Center. They're still eligible to go to Rattabush and down in Cincinnati as well, but that's where their primary care is issued from. 214 request, we were doing well on that, we make a lot of requests, but with that way back government stoppage at three weeks, they get 5,000 requests a day, and I used to be able to get those back in about two weeks and now it's taken two months, so, I explain that to the veteran as they come in. Widows benefit programs, I'm assisting, we actually have 28 widows that their claims are open, but that's one very difficult program. We've been able to assist several widows, but it's just a difficult program. There's a note down there, I wrote it in, I found out that I have to have a second knee surgery, just for information, Kathy and the auditor's office assisted me with FMLA. They wanted me to have this in September, I moved it out to December 5th, I'm gonna try to hold that date, because I'll be off work six weeks. And, does that mean I'm gonna quit? Debbie can't listen to this, but no, what I'm doing, I'll get that information and I'll keep working veterans that month, I just have a lot of rehab and other items going on and, but they'll still be worked, I'll say it that way. Won't be turning no hours in, because when you're on that, part-time, you don't get any pay and that's okay. So, I will be working veterans during the month of December. I think that's it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Seems like you've been busy.
Bobby?
Busy.
Thanks for all that you do for the veterans.
I appreciate it.
And the surrounding counties, and we appreciate it, we know you work hard on it.
And I think most of them appreciate it as well, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
County attorney, he's in trial this morning, so he won't be here. I talked to him this morning, he is gonna have the contract done for our new highway supervisor. I'm gonna get that to you before Friday. Council representatives, we have one here this morning?
Nope.
No? Okay. We've gone to the mail, letter to be signed to Paper Business Solutions, Jim?
Yeah, evening. I went ahead and wrote a letter notifying Paperless Business Solution as our case management system for the probation department. I think there was a misunderstanding that in the courthouse, the CSI is the management company, ours is a separate company, they've not been notified that we're switching to Odyssey. In the meantime, I received an email from them wanting a new contract signed to cover August 1st of this year to December 31st of next year. Obviously, we're not going to need them for the entire year next year, so, I went ahead and typed up a letter so that they can be notified by the commissioners that there is gonna be a transition and after a certain point, we will no longer need their services. I also gave you a copy of the contract that they're wanting signed. I did meet with the county attorney, gave him a copy of that, I gave Mike at IT a copy of that. I'm assuming that as the chief probation officer, I can sign that contract, but I, from what I understand, we, I don't know where a contract is for PBS, we've had it for at least 15 years and there's no contract on record, we paid a monthly maintenance fee. But I don't have where they updated the contract from year to year, since I've been in, I haven't seen a contract. So, they're now wanting a contract. On page six of that new contract, it does talk about termination. My understanding is that as long as we give them a written notice 30 days prior to terminating, that we'll be okay with that. And then, at the end of the letter, I advised them that Mike, the IT director, would be contacting them to look at what the transition needs are for us to switch to Odyssey. I think probation's gonna be after the courthouse. I actually have scheduled for J-TAC to come down next Thursday and do a demonstration at the probation department for our case management services. I think she said they were looking at October, and I'm assuming there's gonna be a period of time in between that we're still gonna need access to that information before we completely go over to the Odyssey programming. I'm just wanting them to be notified that, you know, we're going to end the services before I sign that contract.
I, okay. Don't think that you can sign the contract.
Okay, is it for the commissioners to sign?
I believe so, yes.
It's included in that packet I gave Barton and there's actually a second signature page to that also. And that's fine, I didn't, that's why I brought it, I didn't know if I could or if I couldn't.
So, will you, will you still be able to access your data when you switch to Odyssey or how does?
I think at a certain point, I, you know what, that's something that Mike, I do believe we will have access to prior, I mean, we've had this for 15 years, so we have thousands and thousands of names in there. I don't know, I believe the way Mike explained it, we would have a snapshot where we could go back and look at information, but we won't have a license or access to adding to that, subtracting from that, we can only look at that. But that's really something, Mike.
Yeah, the reason I asked that, I know, when we switched our financial system, our old financial system is available for us to look at, but we have, we do pay, you know, we do pay to be able to have that, that availability.
And that's a possibility, like I said, PBS isn't aware even that we're switching, so the details of that, I don't really know at this point, and I'm waiting for our IT services to be able to contact them directly, cause I wouldn't have any idea. And I think what instigated the new contract is that they were wanting to raise the monthly maintenance fee by 3%, which I'm fine with, we have that in our budget to cover that, it's, it's really not a major increase, and they have an increase for 15 years, so I can understand why they would need some.
I would just about imagine that with Odyssey replacing some of their networks in other counties, that, that may be one reason why they've researched their, their, who has the contract.
Well.
So, that I understand this correctly, you wanna go ahead and, and sign this contract until Odyssey is up and running and then you wanna exercise the 30-day notice, is that correct?
Right, right, which, if, signing that contract, it will cover until December 31st of 2015. I'm saying I don't think we'll need that long, but if we do, that, that's another year that if we need their services or we're having to pay partial, we would have it available, but as soon as we're done, as long as I give a 30-day notice, they're gonna be prepared and they'll know.
And you, you have the money to pay for the 3% increase?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got that covered. And then, just the signing of the letter notifying them was the only other thing that I was needing. I was needing.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Just the signing of the letter that I created to notify PBS that the county is switching over.
I would recommend that we do agree this subject to Crisco, and I would just think he has approval.
Second.
Then move to second, and we do sign the letter she's, she's asked for, and that we approve this contract subject to the county attorney, look, get over and give his blessing to him.
And I think he has, I mean, he's looked at it, he just needs to maybe check it. I don't know what you're talking about.
We still have to vote on that motion. We still have to vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Here's your letter that you can go ahead and send it to Jenna, and...
Make me a copy of that, sign it.
And I need copies of the contract when that gets done, whenever it gets signed.
Okay.
Okay, you've got to take that.
I'll put that with the rest of your schedule.
Does anybody know what that is?
Well, me, me, and, and I have a couple copies. We were, we were contacted by Umbau that we had to prepare an arbitrage calculation for the, for the first mortgage refunding bonds that we did in two thousand twelve, and you, the commissioners approved that contract, and they have sent us that document, and have, I believe, they have, I think this is all we'll need, and I'm assuming they have filed this wherever this needs to be filed with. Good luck on totally understanding this document, because that's why I didn't even want to attempt to complete it, because they had to do certain calculations, and they are CPAs. So, the other thing also, if anybody wants to look at that, it's, I have a couple copies of it. The other thing I will say while we're discussing that, I did, I did get a call from, hold on a second. I did get a call from Standard and Poor's about, oh, it was about a month ago, because when we, when we did our funding on the bonds, we had an A rating, but we were listed with a negative outlook. Based on that, once a year, I'm on the phone with them for about an hour and a half or two hours with two representatives from Standard and Poor's, and they ask for certain information from us, and they send me about a fifteen-page document, and then we go over that, and then they ask other questions. And she, I got a call back from the lady that did this, she was the main contact on the phone, Anna, and she has a hard-to-pronounce last name, and she basically said we had maintained our A rating, and we have actually been upgraded from a negative outlook to a, yeah, we've upgraded from negative to stable, which is good for us and for the bonds, so, we actually may not have to go.
Well, really doesn't affect, really doesn't affect the bond.
Doesn't affect the bond.
We have now, it would if, if we bonded again.
Correct. So, that was, that was kinda good news, because they reaffirmed the negative rating last year and then upgraded us.
Okay, so let's, there's no acting to take on.
No.
In the mail, we have a request for FMLA, we have one from the nine eleven, which you can speak to here.
Yes, we had an employee there that had recently went to full-time, I think back in May. He had applied for FMLA, and FMLA, he does not qualify for FMLA due to, they do a look-back for a year, this employee also had been a part-time employee, did a look-back for a year, and he did not have enough hours, had not worked enough hours to qualify under the federal guidelines for FMLA. So, barring that, barring that FMLA doesn't apply, we're basically doing this after the fact, just to proving that, that he had leave, and the dates of, the dates of the leave were from July 18th through August the 2nd. So, we're just backtracking and doing the paperwork, this was just brought to me yesterday.
And we have, we have this one, this.
Oh, she just brought that today, okay. And there was another request for leave from an employee at the jail that is requesting leave, not for their own illness, but due to a family illness, and they'll be using FMLA. And the way that kinda, kinda works, we've had it work in the past, that they apply for FMLA, speciality for family, and that way, it, it kinda gives them, they don't get, they aren't paid necessarily out of their normal sickly pay or vacation pay they would have coming, but it does mean that it's basically a forgivable absence due to them being, like to take family member to the doctor, or to have to, you know, be a caregiver, those type of things. So, like, say, they were taking a family member, had to take family member for treatments or something, they were gone four hours, four hours, three times a week, then, then those twelve hours are counted against the total of twelve weeks that they could get under FMLA.
So, do we need to approve that?
Yeah, one is, one is just a, just a retroactive leave approval, and the other is an FMLA that has just been filed.
Yes, Billy, he is. Billy, there?
Yeah, he's over there.
Do you have any problems with this?
Is that for Sue?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any problem with them.
Okay.
Motion to approve. So, we need a motion to approve the, the two FMLs.
Second.
Then move to second, we approve the two people for FMLA, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Map printer, Kathy Road, we've already done that. Jenna?
I'm back.
You're back.
Can't get rid of you. Okay, I'm back again on a request to purchase a vehicle for the probation department. County council did approve for two thousand fourteen, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in order to purchase a second vehicle. I do intend to trade in our, I think it was nineteen ninety-three, or Star Van and nineteen ninety-five Crown Dig, in order to purchase that. I presented to you, I did a comparison chart, I did get three quotes, we have Redmond's, Advantage Ford, this is just the original quotes, if you guys wanna look at them, and Gross Auto Sales. And actually, I'm changing my recommendation after receiving a quote from Gross Auto Sales. I actually think that's probably the better purchase. They are offering a two thousand fourteen Impala Limited LS, and it only has nine thousand...
Four ninety-six.
Yeah, miles on that, I didn't write that down, I don't think. Yeah, I did, nine thousand four hundred ninety-six. It has the least amount of mileage on it, fully loaded, 'cause it's a limited LS, it has OnStar capability, I don't know that we would use that, I'd have to look into the cost of that, but had the controls on the steering wheel for Bluetooth, or if you needed to use hands-free phone. I did look at, my main things I was looking at was the gas mileage. I intend to use this vehicle mainly to drive out of town for trainings, field visits, juvenile officers have to visit once a month, kids in placement, we have it from Wabash, Indiana to Richmond, Indiana, I, we're gonna be traveling a lot more in the next year. Also, I wanted, at minimum, a front-wheel drive, just so that in bad weather, wanted to be able to do that, and also, on Gross Auto Sales, they actually offered the most trade-in value for the two vehicles, they offered two thousand nine hundred total for the two. Advantage Ford offered five hundred, and Redmond's offered six hundred total for both of them, so they were offering quite a bit more. There's Carfax report with the Impala, there's also a report Auto Check with the Advantage Ford Fusion. I still like the two thousand twelve Fusion, it's just it looks like the Impala's probably a better deal.
What's it, Cars.com comparison, what is that?
I did that separately, and I was looking at mileage. The top number is what the dealership reported to me as the mileage, I did my own separate independent research on the mileage, just to do a comparison. On the Impala, he had given eighteen city, thirty highway.
No, I'm, no, I'm talking, that next column down, what is that?
The warranty?
Cars.com comparison.
That's a comparison of the gas per mileage that I did independently, basically on that site of comparing the gas mileage of the different vehicles.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to make sure we were getting the best gas mileage.
Right.
Yeah, because actually, Gross Auto Sales on the Impala was eighteen thirty, but when I did the search, it was twenty-five thirty-five, so I don't know what he based that on. So, just to be safe, I did another one. Also, on the warranty, the warranty's longer, it will last until August 27th of two thousand sixteen, or thirty-six thousand, and it says nine miles, and I don't know if that was an error, if it should just be thirty-six thousand miles. The Ford Fusion does have the option of doing an extended warranty, however, that'll cost us a thousand six hundred fifty-five more, and I didn't get anything from Redmond as far as the warranty, I'm assuming we'll have the factory warranty for that two thousand thirteen Impala that they put the quote for.
So, on the, on the warranty for the Impala, Impala for Gross Auto, that's just this drivetrain warranty?
No, actually, the drivetrain warranty is longer.
As a?
And I think he indicated that in his letter of the quotes. The August 27th, two thousand sixteen, thirty-six thousand is the general warranty, general factory warranty left on the vehicle. The powertrain's actually longer than that.
Okay, so if you have a warranty issue, you take it back to Gross Auto, and then they handle the issue?
I think I would have to go to a GM dealer at that point, so I would have to locate the, the GM dealer in order to do that.
Okay.
Well, the Impala has a third less miles than what, excuse me, the Impala from Gross has a third less miles on it than what the one from Redmond does, and five thousand less than the Ford Fusion. And the Impala at Gross is a two thousand fourteen, the Fusion's a twelve, and the other Impala's thirteen, so...
So, you wanna purchase the one from Gross Auto?
Right.
Correct, I'm saying that's probably the best deal out of the three.
Looks like it to me.
Mr. President, if there are no objections, I'll move to approve the purchase of the two thousand fourteen Impala from Gross Auto Sales. I'll second that.
Then move to second, we, now Jenna, to purchase the two thousand fourteen Impala from Gross Auto Sales. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We've started to do your homework on this.
Yeah, I have, I've worked on it for a while.
Appreciate that.
Just wanted to kinda give you a heads-up too, I'm gonna ask me on the agenda for the next meeting, we have moved the juvenile officers over to the other side of the newer part of the annex, and we're getting quotes together to get a secure door there, we're actually looking at doing the key fobs in order to gain entry into the, the inner part of the offices, and also, we're getting quotes for a safety glass. We have a window there that, that opens sideways, but we're actually looking for a thicker protective glass with the opening hatch, that'll slip things through, it's just safer.
Right.
So, I'll be presenting that next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Nine eleven interlocal agreement, do you have a copy of that?
This is getting worn out from being background.
This is an agreement that, that we have with, with the city, for them to house the nine eleven over there, and for the amount of money that they're going to be paying, which is...
Hundred and twenty thousand a year.
So, you need a motion to accept that?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out what it is.
Hundred and twenty thousand, I believe.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, ten, ten thousand dollars a month. The, the old agreement was up, in fact, we haven't had one for a while, so this is a two-year agreement that we're agreeing to.
Am I right, it is a hundred and twenty?
It is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, need a motion to approve or accept that agreement with the city.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Then move to second, we approve the interlocal agreement with the city for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in them housing the nine eleven in their facility. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a contract with Mays Construction, as you probably all know we, the council did not approve the money, the extra money needed, that's what they appropriated for the highway garage. So, we're back to, we're back to square one, and what we're gonna have to do is have that project redrawn for, and put out for bids again, cut the grides down to the size of whatever the money we have left out, the six hundred thousand dollars. The contract which Mays has presented to us is for ten thousand five hundred dollars, which is all the total fixed fees that that firm will be doing. And then, again, the ten five's gonna come off of that original six hundred thousand dollars, so we...
That's what it's gonna cost to change the plan?
Yes, that's what it's gonna cost to change it.
But we had five eighty-seven left, and some change, five eighty-six and some change, so this ten thousand off of that's gonna leave us, what, about five seventy-five, fifty, five hundred, something like that.
Yeah, we ran, we ran those numbers.
I'm sorry?
In round, in round figures, yeah, it's probably gonna be a little bit less than that, 'cause we, we got to bill in for printing the plans and the state filing fee and all that.
Plus, we'll have, we still have in the original contract, thirty-five hundred for, for their services during construction, to make sure everything's being built.
And that, and we'll still have that on top of this, ten thousand five hundred dollar fee, so, we keep paying in at the money, we have to have, we have to have a garage down, every one we've got passed repaired, and we have a structural engineer's report that says that, but, in the council's wisdom, they, they do not want to appropriate any more money, so we'll have to do what we can do, that's all.
So, we've additionally, to this far, spent thirty-three thousand dollars, so this would be forty-three thousand.
You've additionally, well, you've really spent...
Spent more than that, actually.
You've really spent forty-eight thousand dollars.
In, in over fourteen or fifteen months.
Over fourteen or fifteen months, some of that is, some of that is wasted, some of it is not. Part of that money is sawboorings, in the council's, council's wisdom, they decided that we had to build the garage right where the, where the, on the same site we have now. So, we had to have two sets of sawboorings done down there to find a spot that, not a good spot, but a, a spot that we could build. I met with a committee of the council concerning this garage, because we'd been battling back and forth what we were doing there, that committee recommended that we try and buy Fuzzles Building. To buy Fuzzles Building, we have to have two appraisals... To buy Fuzzles Building, we have to have two appraisals to do. We spent 3,500 dollars on appraisal fees and then they decided that we should not buy Fuzzles Building, we should go down there. So that 3,500 dollars is essentially wasted, but we are where we are. So to get any kind of a garage to go, we need to harm Mr. Mays to reduce them plans to what money we've got spent.
So to let the public know, once we approve this 10,500 and they draw up new plans, we're pretty much ready to go. There's no more going to be wasting or finagling back and forth.
Well, there's no, there's, no, the council made it perfectly clear last, the last meeting that they was not interested in spending any more money. So we've essentially, what we're saying is we'll take what money we've got and do the best we can with it.
I'd rather bet my money on a bear stock market as to what they're going to do. Nevertheless, we've got our backs to the wall and we have no choice. So I move to, and I will say that this architect has done a banging job, everything that's been done so far and his availability to answer questions and provide expertise. He's been to meetings with us, with the county council. Given that, Mr. President, if there are no objections, I move to approve the contract with him.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and second to approve the contract with Mr. Mays, 10,500 dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will proceed. What this, what this is going to mean is we're assured that we're not going to get any more than an office and a shop. All our trucks and equipment's going to be sitting outside, which is, which is not good, but we have no other choice.
Does that include lawn doors?
New bids. Mr. Wason?
Mr. Wason's my dad, but that's all right.
Sheriff Wason.
Yeah, that'll work too. Not quite the reading I got earlier. I just wanted to touch base with you guys on this padded cell and my additional, my paperwork and my numbers, I didn't get those in to get additional to advertise for the misdemeanor funds, but I want to try to do some repair to that padded cell. It is just about padded. One of the, we got two quotes. There's only a couple of places that actually do that stuff, so I don't have three. We want to try to go with the repair from padded surfaces by B and E. The repair is 11,700 dollars. To replace it completely is 31,775. That's, I mean, you're talking three times. So at this point, I think we can go with the repair. I'm going to pay for that out of the misdemeanor fund, which is a, which those funds are available through some of the fines that are levied against the violators and stuff and prisoners that we have when they're sentenced. Do we get money come back from the state for that? I have 65, 64,000 or so in that fund. Bless you. So I want to pay for that out of there. So at 11,700. Any questions on the padded cell? Must be alerts to get paperwork.
It'll get tore up again anyway, right?
You know what?
It'll get tore up again anyways.
Well, I know. It's amazing how they put that stuff in there. I mean, they call it a padded cell, but it's fairly hard. Those people get in there and they can find a little thread somehow and the next thing you know, they've got three feet of it tore off and they're eating it and.
Eating?
Oh, well.
Oh, yeah.
That's, yeah. I need to bring some videos over so you guys can watch the video. But that's sort of how that works. The guys get back there, the officers get back there and stop them as soon as they can, but you know, with the staff that we have and watching them over the camera, when they get busy, before you know it, it can have it tore off, I mean, lickety-split. So any questions on the padded cell repairs? All right. Also, we're wanting to, my current transport car is a Chevy Impala and it has about 100 and, about 120,000 miles on it. We're wanting to purchase another transport car. I want to pay for it out of misdemeanor fund also. I'm wanting to purchase a 2013 Chevy Impala from Redmond's. I've got the paperwork, your paperwork there, you'll see what he offered for trade-ins. We wanted to get rid of, trade in four vehicles that are in the fleet now. One of those is a Dodge Durango from '08. Another one is a '05 Crown, 2005 Crown Vics and an '06 Crown Vic. I wrote the mileages of those vehicles out to the right there so you can see what we're getting rid of. There's the selling price is 14,250. The trade-ins is 4,550. That gives a final price of 9,700 dollars for the car. I want to purchase a cage or a partition to put in it. It's another 600 dollars for that, making the total price of 10,300 for that vehicle. That car will become our primary transport car and the one we currently have will go as our backup car source, so to speak. Right now, we're doing transports to Richmond, Muncie, to the doctors, back and forth, and we're doing those in these other cars. And they're just, they're just really not safe enough to be even leaving town. So instead of taking, you know, these chances and stuff and having a breakdown on the way to Richmond with an inmate or two in there, which is going to cause a whole heap of crap to deal with. I'd like to go ahead and get rid of those vehicles. That's going to also cut our fleet by almost a quarter by getting rid of these vehicles. And that's going to help on our insurance rates because we're eliminating an '08 Durango, we're eliminating three other Crown Vics that are on there, that are on our rates and we have full coverage on everything. So that's going to cut our fleet down by a quarter almost, okay, with adding a car back. But yet, you know, it's going to be a lot better vehicle to have available for the transports. We have to run our prisoners to DOC now. DOC doesn't come to get them and we're making those trips, you know, once, twice, three times a month at least. And that could be to DOC. They just made a trip last week. They had to go all the way up to Michigan City, bring a guy back, you know, for a hearing, turn around and take him back the next day. Well, that's, that's an eight-hour day on that transport, just there and back. So we're doing a lot more transports with the gas prices staying about where they have been for the last year or so, a couple of years. The Impalas are the best to use for that. I mean, we're averaging upwards of 28, 29 miles a gallon out of that car. So that has really cut back on our gas usage in that area. Any questions on the car?
No, you need to, you need to have a car that runs and goes.
Yeah, yeah.
What color is it?
Well, that's really the downfall to the whole thing.
Pink?
It's white. And we have tried to stay with black and, or the gold, just because of having some kind of, you know, uniformity with everything, but it's white. It has, it's a good, it's a good deal and I can override mine.
I was just joking.
Yeah, I know. Those things don't set very well with the sheriff's association in the beginning of buying black vehicles.
I actually saw a white one marked yesterday on the end of the end.
Yeah, yeah, they, a lot of them are giving in. For those of you guys don't know, the sheriff's association wants our cars to be uniform. They want them to black or the brown and the beige, two-tone, that's what they want. Well, my first couple of vehicles we bought were black. They almost got called to the principal's office, so to speak, over, but my first question was, well, what's the punishment? Well, we just don't like it. Well, you give me the 3,000 bucks extra for the paint and we'll paint every one of them. They didn't want to do that, so we got all black. But it's white. We're going to stripe it up, put the partition in it, put a radio in it and a few lights just in case he would have to, you know, we've had them a couple of trips to Muncie stuff where they got about, almost there and they were going to the psychiatric hospital and then the guy started flipping out, so they had to turn, run lights and sirens. So we got to have some of that in that vehicle. Most of the equipment out of these others that we're getting rid of, we'll transfer over. We've bought good equipment in the past, so we're able to transfer some of that stuff over, radios, siren boxes, speakers. So I don't think I'm going to have a huge equipment cost in there other than having the stuff installed. But other than that, that's pretty much the rundown on that. So I'm really, I guess, just telling you guys what I'm wanting to do and if you have objections of me purchasing that vehicle, because ultimately it is assigned to the commissioners. You guys are in control of the vehicle, all of the vehicles we have. You guys are in control of those because you are the paid accounting commissioners. So any questions, concerns about that purchase?
No, not the vehicle. Back in the beginning, you took me through the jail, the padded cell, and I'd like to go back through again. I mean, I know you got to fix it, but I'd like to go back through again.
Okay. After or before?
Before.
Okay.
Like soon.
Okay. Well, it's sort of your building. I just maintain it, so you're more welcome to pop over there anytime and just tell them they'll let you right in there, I'm sure. So. And something else just popped in my head. I can't remember what it was. It'll come back to me. Any other questions? Anything about those two purchases or those vehicles? Okay. I'm also going to want to take, we did some calculations on our gas usage and this, these things seem to come up all the time about, especially when I come back every September and ask the council for more gas money, because when we put in for 70,000 in our budget, which what it takes to, for gas for the year, they always cut it to 40. Then I come back in September and ask for 30 for the last seven years in a row and then they say we're using too much gas and then I have, it's, yeah. It's like Groundhog Day, if you've never seen that movie. Three feet. So I'm going to, we did some math on that. We figured out, we're about 10,000 dollars a year out of that is transports for gas for prisoners and inmates. And I'm going to want to transfer 10,000 out of the misdemeanor fund to cover that gas for those inmates, those prisoners. So I'm also going to ask them the next, I'm going to come tonight and ask that, but I'm going to put in an additional for that money also. So I'm just giving you guys the heads up. That's probably something we, we probably should have been looking at that and doing the math on that, but with DOC doing all their transports until a year or so ago, we really didn't consider it a huge expense. But after we start figuring it up, thinking, well, 10,000 bucks out of a 70,000 budget for the year of gas, I mean, that's, that's a pretty sizable amount. So hopefully with doing that, I only have to come back and ask the council for maybe 20,000 to finish up the year for gas. But every year, when we have these song and dance, so to speak, and we do the same thing again, you know, I'll explain to them that our cars are costing us about 4,400 dollars a car for the year for fuel, okay? That includes patrol, that includes the off-duty use. That's everything. 4,400 dollars for a patrol vehicle for the year for fuel is our average on our patrol cars. For those of anybody who does any driving, okay, do the math on what you spend for a year on gas, driving back and forth to work and see where we are in comparison. I think we're relatively cheap. When we hear about the off-duty use, I know some of you guys probably hear some of that. I mean, that 4,400 dollars is for the year for both patrol and off-duty. I would put that up against anybody who has to do both of those things, especially when our call volume has increased by 50% in the last year and a half, okay? So when the state police and there's an average of those vehicles, when we talk about compensation, those vehicles are estimated to be worth about 6,000 bucks in compensation, okay? As far as a fringe benefit, so to speak, or part of, part of their salary, okay? So when we get paid 25,000 and we get a car and that's 6,000, that takes you up to 31,000. Well, in my argument for all of this, and the same thing I do with the council, is if I'm only getting 4,400 dollars for the year for that car, and that includes patrol, then that sort of means my guys are paying for patrol use because we're still under the 6,000 dollars on what it's worth in compensation. So I'll throw that argument out there for you to think about and mull that over because if you set and put it down on paper and think and do all the addition, you got to go, oh, traffic's right. Doesn't happen very often, I'm not going to lie. So any other questions about anything of those three items? Nope. Okay.
Nope.
All right.
So you need a motion for the padded cell on the vehicle?
If you would do that, it'd be great. And the fuel out.
Do you need a separate motion Debbie? Can we do, do a?
We can do them all together.
Okay. Mr. President, I would move to approve the expenditures of 11,000, 11,700 dollars to repair the padded cell in the jail. I will also move to approve his purchase of a new transport vehicle at 10,300 dollars. Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve repairing the padded cell and purchasing the used vehicles, are in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. When you guys do your budgets coming up here, it comes time for vehicles. Since the vehicle, the sheriff's department vehicle budget is in your budget, purchasing this vehicle, do not let that, or that, the county council or anybody else, let that, let them use that as a argument for not purchasing vehicles for next year. This just replaces our current transport car.
Not patrol vehicles.
Yeah, it does do anything for patrol vehicles. We still have to have some of those for next year. Two would be great with the purchasing of the used cars like we have been for the last six years. That eventually catches up if we don't rotate them out. We were able to buy two of the trucks last year, the year before last. Those replaced two. We got one truck last year because that's what we had the money for. It replaced a patrol vehicle. The trucks are the best buy for the money. We can't get used Durangos anymore, the style that we have, because the mileage is through the roof and they're not worth the value. So the trucks are the best deal. Not saying the Ford Explorers aren't as equal, but we can't get those as cheap as we are with those trucks. And we're, we did, Zach was working the other night, did four hours of patrol and he averaged 18 miles a gallon out of his truck, out of the sheriff's truck. So for a full-size four-door truck, crew cab truck with the V8 Hemi in there, 18 miles a gallon's pretty good for what we, for what we do.
I also want to make the argument too is, you're talking about purchasing, so no one can make the argument. This Dodge Durango, the 2008, you have 140,000 miles. That's pretty much average of the vehicles that you have.
Yeah.
The Durangos.
Yeah.
Most of us, a lot of people don't have vehicles that have that many miles. So if you're out there patrolling, you need to have a vehicle, you know, so they need to consider purchasing.
They have to be sound. Our repairs are down. I mean, we're not, we're not really, we're servicing them, the vehicles, but our repairs, you know, we're not having to put in, you know, 800 dollars worth of front-end struts and shocks and that kind of stuff to some of these cars where, you know, our roads are, they're a little rough in what some places we go. I mean, we still have, there's probably three or four driveways that we still have to cross creeks to get to the house, okay? And a lot of people don't realize we still have those, but we do. There's probably a half dozen. So that's all I have. I would like to thank Jay for all his help and the service that the county highway gives the sheriff's department when they plow our front out here and they do all that work and, you know, I'd like to give him a big group hug if we could get to that. Sure. Okay, I thought I'd offer that. So, but we, Jay, we do appreciate you and enjoy your retirement and come around and visit. Just come through the front, knock through the back door if you want me. Thank you guys.
Next item on the agenda, tax sales support services. Debbie?
This is pretty routine. This is what we have each year that allows us to do the regular tax sale in October, which has already been set. I forget what date it is, but already starting to work on that. And there are fees for this. Basically, there's a 70 dollar tax sale fee that is put on each property that's on tax sale. So when it's paid, the taxpayer pays this or the tax sale win buyer pays it. So that is no cost to us. The only cost we have is for the advertising, which we also haven't, well, it actually isn't because we put an advertising fee on there also. So that's what this is, is just to do this for the 2014 sale.
Okay. We need a motion to approve, approve that access, no cost, no cost to the county system service.
Same move. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the tax sales support services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Transportation Grant, David McLeit.
I'm going to do that too.
Okay.
Since we first, and I say we because I am on the senior center board and I'm also
Since we first, and I say we because I am on the senior center board and I'm also, I also wrote the initial grant that got their transportation started. Want to remind everybody that's watching TV that thinks that we do not have public transportation in Payette County. We do. It's run by our senior center. And every year, we submit for a grant to provide, that we get reimbursement for quarterly. And Diana Wright wasn't, wasn't available nor David this morning to be here, but Diana does a great job as grant administrator on that grant and she works with Dave, Dave real closely, it's her first year of work with Dave on that. And this is just authorizing the grant application. The way it works is the money, we are the, the county is the applicant and the senior center is the sub-recipient, so basically it's just a pass-through grant. So, when the money comes in, the federal monies for this, which are distributed by NDOT, we get the monies in, directly deposit in our account, we turn around, write a check, it's for reimbursement, write back over to the senior center. So, that's what this is for.
Need a motion to accept?
Yes, we did.
Second.
Been moved and secondly, accept the transportation grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Warren, you want to talk to us about Bridge 25 and 61?
Only thing I have on 25 is we're negotiating a contract yet, so I'll have something with the design consultant, have something for the next meeting on the design of Bridge 25.
Okay, I thought that was already here, but it's not, huh?
No, NDOT's looking at it.
Okay.
So, I'm going to Greenfield tomorrow for a quarterly meeting with them, so I'll meet with them and talk about the, all the federally projects on highways, bridges, bridge inspections. We'll find out hopefully how that stays. Bridge 61 is, they're installing the guardrail today and hopefully they'll have it done this afternoon, maybe tomorrow at the latest, so it should be open to traffic, Bridge 61 on County Route 350 East. And it looks purely good, so hope the grass grows. And I was wondering if you wanted to have a ribbon cutting in a couple of weeks after the next meeting or is that a procedure you...
That's fine. Would you mind do?
Okay, just after, after lunch or something like that.
Yeah, right after our meeting.
Right after the meeting? Okay.
Sounds good.
So, they're, they're like a week and a half ahead of the schedule.
Good.
So, okay, I think that's about all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Warren.
Thanks, sir.
And what is this down here, tax sale services at the end?
Oh, we got it done there twice. Sorry. Somehow we got it done twice.
We're overachievers.
We're, we're overachievers.
Yes.
I've never been accused of that.
We have, we have an appointment to make for the tourism board. We had a resignation from that. We have a recommendation of Amanda Stevens, who is the manager of Woodruff's Inn, I understand. And I've talked to her and she is willing to, to accept that position. It's according to the releases of the commissioner, but we do, we do need to make an appointment.
Move to approve Amanda Stevens to fill the vacancy on the tourism board.
Second.
Been moved and secondly, appoint Amanda Stevens to the tourism board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Patience concerns, I have down here the, Phyllis Crowley, there's alley out in Falmouth. There's...
There used to be an alleyway that ran behind Mom and Nat's property, where my grandfather owned, oh, west, east side of Falmouth. But I believe when grandpa had it, he had the land combined, where the alleyway would have went, according to the deeds from 1800, it would have been 85 feet, square feet from east to west, down 99 and a half from north to south, which would have made that alleyway go straight through the middle of the property, all the way down towards the store. So, obviously the land where we have been paying property taxes, grandfather, my grandfather has already had that land combined. According to your guys' auditor's map, the alleyway would run down the neighbor's property that's been giving me trouble, down the side of his, down Dean and Linda Selby's and Andy Rollins' parents. Last night, we had an incident where he decided to drive through the farmer's field, through our backyard, causing a wreck, and I had to call 911. I've had to call the cops on him three times. And they told me, they called the highway department, they said there's no legal alleyway in their eyes there. I called the auditor's office, they told me that, sign me up for the commissioners bring it to you guys, because I need to know exactly where the land starts, where it ends, if there's really an alleyway there. If there is, can we get it absorbed into the land because it's been homesteaded for over 50 years? It's not been in use, if it's still there.
Well, that, that's a problem for Warren to decipher if there is an alley and where it is. Warren, could you handle that and then we can take that up at our next meeting?
Is it, was it vacated 50 years ago?
It's been vacated on the, on the map that we have seen. There is still the, where the county owns, Point 005, and it would come out across from the Oath Snow Lodge. It stops and it turn, will turn left and it'll go down between the Rollins' property and Selby's. Has nothing to do with the Crawleys or the Flats. And we got Mr. Rollins wanting to be, you know, but he wants to plow down the farmer's fields, plow down our drive, let his kids come down and drive us that. And we wasn't raised that way to be disrespectful to our neighbors or anybody else and I'm, I'm really tired of having to deal with that. I want some done, so I'm begging.
Well, like I said, we need to determine where the alley is and whose it is and Mr. Sutoff will do that and then come back for the next meeting. We'll try and take care of the problem then.
Thank you so much.
Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any other patience concerns? If not, we have, we need to approve the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Been moved and secondly, claims and the payroll will be, be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, opposed, and carrying. Ignore the items on the agenda and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Been moved and secondly, this meeting be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.
Man.